I'd like to call this meeting to order. The best, Madam Clark.
Mayor Parton. Vice Mayor Gore. Counselor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Denton.
Here.
Counselor Pelham.
Here.
Counselor Holloway. You have a quorum.
Thank you. I think our first order of business is to go into closed meeting. Madam Clark, would you read the paragraph that applies to this session?
Suggested motion, move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel matters including board and commission appointments, the assignment and performance of specific appointee and employees of city council, and move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A30, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body and to the extent such discussion would be aided thereby.
So move. Your second. The motion has been first by Counsel Holloway, second by Counsel Denton. We'll call Madam Clark.
Counsel Pelham.
Yes.
Counsel Holloway.
Yes.
Counsel Joyner.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Denton.
Here.
Motion passes five to zero.
Yes. For all those here to attend the meeting, we should be back by seven o'clock.
Hi, guys.
Madam Clerk, would you read the reconvening, uh, statement?
Um, there has to be a roll call to come out of close first and then I'll do it.
Hmm?
It's roll call and then certification.
Okay, let's have a roll call then.
Counselor Pelham?
Here.
Was there a motion? Do you have a motion to come out of?
Close this session, yes. You're right.
Reconvene the motion.
There's been a motion to reconvene, is there a second?
Second.
There's motion by Counselor Holloway, second by Counselor Harris. A roll call, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joiner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Now read your statement, ma'am.
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D where only public business matters one lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and two identified in closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joiner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so at this time, let's, uh, do we have to, has anybody said to do prayer or anything?
It's supposed to be...
Do we have?
The work session.
The work session.
It's supposed to be past the heart.
Okay.
Oh yeah, that's not to after, but we got work session.
Okay, so, I mean, uh, work session, Mr. Bennett.
So, Madam Clerk, if you would bring up the, um, work session items, please. Uh, members of council, this evening for this work session, I would like to present to you for the first time a draft of the Strategic Economic Development Plan, uh, that we have been working on with, uh, a work group from the Economic Development Authority, Public Economic Development Authority, and a work group with the city council. Um, so, tonight in this work session, I'm going to introduce this document to you. Uh, since it is a work session, we're not calling for any action, and, uh, I'm not going to, I'm not going to read the document to you, uh, word for word, but I'm going to go over the overall structure of the document, and then, uh, we will be coming back, uh, to you in a future meeting to present, uh, an updated final document, uh, and what I'd love to have is some feedback now and then after this meeting, as you take the document with you and spend some time with it, and, uh, between now and the following council meeting, it would be great. So, this is a fourteen-page document that, uh, is separated into three basic groups. Um, the first part of this document speaks, uh, about the introduction, and, um, it really talks about where we're at today and, uh, where we want to be in ten years, and then the s- the s- key areas we need to focus on to get there over the, over the next ten years. love to have is some feedback now, and then after this meeting, as you take the document with you and spend some time with it, and, uh, between now and the following council meeting, it would be great. So this is a fourteen-page document that, uh, is separated into three basic groups. The first part of this document speaks, uh, about the introduction, and, um, it really talks about where we're at today, and, uh, where we want to be in ten years, and then the s, the s key areas we need to focus on to get there over the, over the next ten years. So, um, the page one talks about the goals and missions of this plan, um, and then on page two, we talk about our unique assets as a city, um, and we talk about some of the areas of opportunities, but then we also recognize the reality of some of the constraints that we have, that we're working with, and, uh, so you'll see that on page two. As we go into page three of the document, you'll see where we kind of cast a vision, and, uh, so, as you see this, the vision for a future of Hopewell in 2034, so really that means if we're successful ten years from now, uh, this would be our reality that we're living in by 2034, and, uh, we, we talk about, um, some of the things that you would see as you go around the city. You would talk, you would see some of our amenities, you'd see our infrastructure improvements, um, you would see some of our historical assets being fully developed, um, and curated. Going on through page four and five, you see some of the, um, uh, things that we would have, including, uh, destination sports tourism events. We've made improvements, uh, in, uh, our school systems. This is really, um, it's a vision that, uh, paints a picture where we, where we want to be, and then as we get into page six and beyond, we kind of look at the different areas where we have the, the, the strategic goals and areas of focus. So, one of the things we have to ask ourselves as a city is, what is our role, and what are the things that we do as a, as a city? I was at a Virginia Brownfield, or, it was a, um, a Virginia Economic Developers Association meeting, uh, earlier this summer in Danville, Virginia, and I got to hear, um, uh, Mr. Clark Castile, who is the, um, the executive director of the Danville Foundation, he gave a pretty impressive speech where he talked about how that, um, when you look at, um, your place in, in, in a city, or a county, or, in this case, a foundation, you have to ask yourself, where, where is your part, and what do you do? So use this example, he says, you've all heard the saying, if you teach a man to, uh, or if you give a man a fish, he will eat for what?
A day.
A day, right? Right? If you teach him to fish.
Eat for a lifetime.
Exactly, for a lifetime. But you see as the city, uh, we don't give people fish, and we don't necessarily teach people to fish, but we build the docks that people can go and fish on, and we have the public safety, uh, and regulations so that people that do visit the docks are, are safe as they're, as they're coming to and from the docks. We collect the revenue necessary to support the public services so that the people who are using the facilities at the docks, um, aren't being exposed to bacteria in the waters and all that. So we, we look at the things that we do as, as a city, uh, what are the pieces that, that we do? And so that's something to keep in mind as we go through this. It's not just the city by itself. We talk about in the introduction here, that the economic development of the city, it rests on the back of the foundation which is built from human development, leadership development, and community development, and really, if you think about the economic development, uh, it is, it is the crop that grows out of the seeds that are planted and watered and cultivated through the human development, leadership development, and community development, and that's how you sustain long-term economic development. So, we would focus here on our business corridors, the riverfront district, downtown, citywide housing, uh, history and tourism, healthcare, education and workforce development, public spaces and right-of-ways, quality of life amenities, and then obviously, um, a new addition here is, uh, filming industry, and, uh, and taking advantage of some of the uniqueness of Hopewell in that standpoint. So, we then go in page seven into our goals, uh, and objectives, and we break down kind of every area of the city, um, and you'll see them named. Now, some of you may look at this document and say, uh, there's a lot of very specific areas and names in, in here, and one of the things that we want to do is, we want to connect our future budget planning and our future focus in, in economic development, and how we, uh, invest, we want to focus that into areas where we can really collectively be, be a catalyst, we want to, we want to encourage velocity in these areas that would, that would have people come alongside us and make those investments. And so, it's not just the city alone, but we are doing our part to lead the way and do, and, and make things ready for the additional private investment that would come. Uh, we've expanded some of our secondary commercial corridors, um, including some of our historic commercial corridors such as Arlington Road, Fifteenth Street Corridor, City Point, and West Broadway. Uh, we talk about, um, how we, um, open up more opportunities for historic tax credits, which are something we can do, but private sector people necessarily cannot do with the same amount of tools. Um, the central business district is an area of focus here on page eight, and then we spend a lot of time, uh, talking about our riverfront and riverfront activities on pages nine and ten. Housing, housing is a, is a pretty, um, is a pretty key thing. Obviously, we need to have places for people to live at all levels, and we need diverse housing, so we need to have an inventory to housing that is appealing to people who are maybe at the end of their careers or end of their life, and don't really want to cut grass or deal with that type of maintenance, but then also, we have housing for growing families, um, that have plenty of young people in the house that can push a mower. So, we have housing, we then talk about the healthcare and strategies we have for growing and attracting more healthcare providers into the city and making spaces for them to be in. And history and tourism, you know, uh, this area, we've been a destination for business since sixteen thirteen, and, uh, we, we want to make sure that we continue that into the future. We celebrate the history, but we also enhance, uh, the, the river and waterfront so we can get the people here to experience that history and the story. If we don't know where we've been, we don't know how we got here, we certainly won't know where we want to go. And then our industrial and manufacturing base, I'm very pleased to, to report that we had a fantastic Made in Hopewell event last Friday. And, uh, really had the opportunity to, um, celebrate, uh, the fact that we still make things in Hopewell. I kind of thought after that Made in Hopewell event, I should have got up and started by saying, uh, could everybody in the room who was made in Hopewell raise your hand? Because I can say I was made in Hopewell. So, that would have been really funny, but, uh, I didn't do that. So, um, but my mom and dad told me I was made in Hopewell, so. Now, um, as we go down here to page thirteen, we talk about education, and.
Well.
The different opportunities, uh, to expand education, to really, uh, we always learn, we're always learning, so how do we be a lifelong learner, and how do we provide, uh, those partnerships and places here where in, in the city of Hopewell, uh, you can basically continue learning from, from, as a very young child, all the way through, um, the, uh, the sunset of your, your life and career? And then public spaces and right-of-ways, so creating a high-quality, uh, vibrant public spaces, right-of-ways throughout the city. You know, I've been to some places, and as soon as you, you drive in, you can tell that it's intentional, the landscaping is intentional, the lighting's intentional, the signage is intentional, and it, it really conveys a feeling of something that's planned, something that had forethought, and something that just did not happen, uh, randomly, and, uh, so, so we have, we have a, we have an older city, and so, uh, but we can change the experience and people have coming into our right-of-ways and public spaces. Quality of life and, and amenities, uh, really, uh, wrap up the, the document here in, uh, on page fourteen, and we talk about attracting new artisans and, and musicians, and, you know, I really celebrate the fact that we are such a diverse community, and I'm so thankful that we're in, we're in such a diverse community, and, uh, I think that that is a great strength that we have, and, uh, we really want to increase our diversity in our city, and, um, and so, I'm looking forward to, uh, to working on that. So that kind of rounds out an overview of the document, and, um, I would love, love to have feedback, uh, you know, between now and the next council meeting on areas that, you may read it and say, hey, Charles, doesn't look like that you addressed this, and maybe you want to put this in there, and, and, or you may read it and say, this needs some wordsmithing or tweaking, but, um, so the next step in a strategic plan, obviously, is once you, once you figure out where you are and where you want to go, and then yearly, what we would do, particularly around the budget, uh, season, is we would take that and say, okay, this year, or the next two years, we want to take and focus on this area with our investment, and we would build out a work plan with tasks underneath there that says, for instance, we're gonna, um, I'll give you an example, so Cavalier Square has been one of the areas of focus in here, and so, we started last year applying for the, uh, the Virginia Housing Community Impact Grant. I worked with the owners to get approval to do that, and Crater Planning District is our fiscal agent, and so that, that was one of the tasks under advancing Cavalier Square for it is, is let's seek the grant to do the, the drawings and design, and see the possibilities, to imagine the future of that area, and what it could look like, and what it could be as a, as a mixed-use, uh, development, and so those would be some of the examples of the task that would fall under that, and every year, we would be revising and changing those. They wouldn't just be put down once and then go into a drawer, but my hope is that we would be pulling this document out many, many times and referring to it and say, see, you know, we talked about this as area of focus, and here's some of the ways we can focus on that. So, um, I could talk the rest of the night about it, I'm very passionate about it, but I do recognize we have seven minutes left until this work session's over, so, I'm happy to take any questions now, and look forward to hearing from you before the next meeting.
Any, any questions, comment? Well, I would just like to thank you for all the efforts you made, and, uh, successful efforts you made, and I understand that Made in Hopewell was a very successful event, and, uh, I was made in Hopewell as well.
All right.
And, um, I, I, I find it an honor to have come back, and I always came back and said that city was such a stable, was seat, city, a beacon on the hill that could always, people can come to. We kill ourselves sometime with the negativity that we speak words to, but I, I really do appreciate your efforts and how you bring the city forward, and, and don't let that negativity stop you and your efforts to, to be, to make Hopewell what it can be. So, personally, I just thank you, and professionally as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was very much a team effort, obviously, with city council and EDA, and I really was just the scribe and quarterback, but happy to be a part.
Thank you. Keep throwing the ball in the end zone, yeah. Uh, Counsel Holloway?
Yeah, I was going to say, uh, feedback also with council. I probably said, thank you for your hard work, uh, every time, uh, um, meeting with Charles, so if he's in the back, he always gives credit to the other directors, and, uh, I like the fact that he is always talking about, you know, I'm, I met with Chris Ward, or I met with the fire department, I met with, met with the police department, uh, just to make sure everything is holistic. We really appreciate your efforts and hard work, uh, for our community, uh, from every perspective and diverse way, so thank you for that. Thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, with that, we're, uh, going to a regular meeting now, call the, uh, call the meeting to order. It's kind of rusty, so bear with me. A roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counselor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Pelham?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Make, make a note of the records that Counselor, um, Vice Mayor Gore is at a conference with her, related to her work employment, and I think, uh, the mayor's on vacation, correct? So, she won't call their names much often now, but I do welcome everyone who've come tonight, uh, to, to take part in this, uh, meeting, and you'll have your opportunity to speak if you so signed up for communication from citizens. So we're, first we have, uh, prayer, uh, is the minister here? Father Charles, uh, Minister Charles, would you do that? And then we have the pledge of allegiance. I give the honor to Counselor Denton.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this opportunity to serve, and Lord, we just ask for your wisdom tonight, and, uh, and let us, as a, as a city, come together to do the, the work you've called us to do, and to be in the place that you've called us to be. Thank you for this opportunity, thank you for the breath in our lungs, and we ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, uh, first, first order of business is, can I have a motion to amend or adopt the, the regular meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
That motion was made by Counselor Denton, and second by Counselor Harris, I think, first, and roll call, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Same order, uh, the consent agenda. We'd like to get a, adopt a motion to, uh, adopt or amend the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Counselor Denton, and second by Counselor Holloway. No amendments, no, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Information presentation, we have an update by Ms. Smith, HR Director, please.
Madam Mayor, as we, um, as they approach the, the bench, I'd just like to say that on behalf of city council and myself, we, um, thank the city council for approving the, the FY twenty-five budget for compensation study. This study will help the city learn, um, where our pay, um, inequities are, and, um, we will, at, at the end of this study, we will present back to council a plan, uh, for implementation. With that said, I'll yield floor to, um, HR Director, uh, for our presentation.
Good evening, members of council. Tonight, we're going to, um, bring you a project overview. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, um, how we got here. Right after, um, the funds were approved, um, we went ahead and formed a committee under the direction of the city manager. After the committee, we went through the procurement process, and then we selected a vendor. The vendor that was selected is Evergreen Solutions, and the project manager is here tonight to go over that project, um, and I just wanted to let you guys know who's on the committee. The committee consists of the city manager, deputy city manager, fire chief, police chief, the CFO, and human resources. And again, that vendor is, um, Evergreen Solutions, and Mr. Holcomb is going to present that to you.
Well, thank you all very much for having me, um, it's great to meet you, and it's great to be here. My name is Mark Holcomb, and I am the project director from Evergreen Solutions, who'll be overseeing, um, our, our project here. I think we do have some slides there, that's the first one, so if we, um, you know, in advance, I'll just, uh, kind of walk you through some of the things we're going to talk about today. There's just a brief introduction to Evergreen in, in a couple slides at the beginning, just so you know who we are, what experience we're bringing, um, and kind of what are, what our background is as we come into a study like this. I will talk a little bit about the study overview, so you'll get to hear kind of what are the different steps that we're going to take throughout the engagement, uh, to get us from, again, the beginning steps, the initiation, where we are right now, to those recommendations, and implementation plan, and, and, you know, what we believe the city could do to make its compensation and classification offerings, um, you know, just the, the best that they can be. And then last, we'll talk a little bit about a timeline, just so you can kind of expect, you know, when to hear from us again, and when we'll have those updates coming forward. So as we go forward. Um, so as we go forward, again, uh, you know, who we are as a company, we are a full-service human resources consulting company. We do work almost exclusively with local governments. Um, I myself lead our largest local government team. And so, we do have other teams that work with colleges and universities, K through 12 school districts, et cetera. But compensation and classification is our main line of business, and it's what we do, you know, every single day. Um, so some of the things that, you know, we're gonna see in this study, some of the, the concerns, the thoughts, or the, the, you know, anticipated, you know, challenges we'll face, we've already maybe seen those in, in dozens of other studies. So we're gonna have ideas of how to attack those. Not just, you know, conceptual ideas, but again, things that have been put into practice with our more than thirteen hundred different studies we've done in the past. If we go to the next slide, we have just a little bit of an overview of some of our experience in Virginia in particular. As I mentioned a moment ago, again, we've done more than thirteen hundred of these compensation and classification studies across the country. Um, but Virginia is one of the states that we work in most primarily. So I'd say it's probably in our top three or four states that we work in. So again, a lot of experience there, and in your immediate area as well. As we go to the next slide, that is gonna be the actual project approach. So I'll slow down a little bit here and, and kind of dig in just a little bit more to give you some, some more details here. So we do have about six different steps that we would say take us through from initiation to the, the final steps of the project. Uh, step number one is, is where we are, is project initiation. And so, we have been working with your Human Resources and with your, your city staff team to collect some data, to set out some of the guidelines, and, and really gather some of that information that we need to jump into a project like this. Of course, there is that data gathering effort in the beginning that gives us, you know, job descriptions, and salaries, and some of your history. So how did things get to be the way that they are now? And what are some of the things that you've done in the past? What have you done to try to keep yourselves competitive? What are your policies that are in place right now? So we're really doing our homework in this stage, and, and really setting ourselves up for success as we continue on down the process. Um, step number two is the employee outreach and employee participation portion of the study. So that's a really key portion for us. Uh, because as I mentioned, I've talked about our experience, what we've done in other Virginia, um, you know, clients, and, and peers that we've looked at in across the country. But we don't want to give you sort of a, a, you know, cookie cutter study that's the same as everybody else's. We want to be able to tie it back directly to you all, directly to Hopewell, and, and say, "Hey, what are your specific challenges?" And the way that we're going to be able to do that is, is by getting that information from your employees, from your directors, from your leaders, from your managers. And so, with that employee engagement phase, we do come on site. So again, if, if, you know, your, your city staff, you may see me again, and, and I'll be here asking some questions. I may bring another consultant with me. And we'll be sitting in a meeting and actually asking, "What are some of the challenges that you all have faced?" Um, you know, do you see job titles that maybe we need to take a look at, and we need to study? Do you see, you know, compensation issues or concerns with recruitment? Is there somebody else who's maybe poached some of your talent, or taken some of your, you know, top performers away? And so, we're gonna be digging in, again, to make sure that we can tie everything back directly to you all, and make it as customized and as personal of a study as we can, so that our recommendations, again, are of the same manner, that we're not just giving you general HR best practices, we're tying specifically back to your concerns. Um, and that's through that employee outreach phase. Step number three, then, is the job classification analysis. So that's going to entail us looking at your classification system. Again, primarily, that'd be job descriptions and job titles at, at a high level. But again, digging in, we're gonna look at things like job families and career paths, and really understand, again, how, how would an employee come in here? How are they classified? How accurate is that system? And where do we see tweaks that we need to make? Um, so with that classification analysis, we are going to study the information provided to us by your HR and city staff, but also by the employees directly. So when the employees provide us information, they say, "Hey, here's what I do every single day." We're gonna look at that survey and say, "Hey, does that match the job title we see?" Or, or maybe do we need a tweak there? So that is, again, a very important part of the process before we get to the recommendations. Step four is the compensation analysis. And so, that compensation, um, that, that market salary survey that we're going to conduct, that's what allows us to come back and say, "Hey, are you competitive? Are you paying what others are paying in your area? Where do you place in your market?" You know, if you look at ten different peers, it's unlikely you'll be number ten. It's unlikely you'll be number one. You know, so where do we find you in the midst of? Are you in the middle right now? Are you below the average? Um, likely, in many, many organizations, so likely, what we'll find here is that some of your positions are doing a little bit better than others. Um, it, it's rare that we go in somewhere and we say, "Yes, every single position's below." It's rare that we say every single position's above. And so, what we may find is, "Hey, you've got some challenges in this department, or with these positions, or with this type of classification." And so, we're gonna look at that. Again, it's gonna be a very customized approach. We're gonna look at the positions that are of most concern, the positions we heard about from employee outreach, get a good sample across the organizations that when we come back with recommendations, again, we can tell you, how do you compare at the entry level? How do you compare with your frontline supervisors, or your managers, or even your directors? We're gonna be able to let you know kind of where are you placed relative to the market throughout your organization. The next step is when we actually do come back with some of the recommendations. And in the recommendations ties together everything that I've just talked to you about, the classification, the compensation, that employee, um, you know, outreach and, and concerns there. We do tie those together into a recommendations document. So our recommendations can be as broad as saying, you know, "Hey, you're well below the market, your compensation structure is not accurate." We, we create a whole new system, and we start all over from scratch. It can be as narrow as, "No, you know, you're doing things pretty well. Let's just make a tweak here." Or, "Let's make a, a, you know, a single, uh, you know, employee here may need a new title, or may need a small adjustment." Um, I don't know what they'll look like yet. Obviously, we have not gone through the process. So again, can't say, obviously, how wide-ranging, or how targeted those will need to be. Uh, but again, e- e- essentially, we're able to look at everything. We're able to look at the entire system, um, and again, give you a recommendation that should bring you forward to a more competitive place that aligns with the city's compensation philosophy and goals. Um, so we will be, again, talking to city staff to try to understand, "Where do you want to compete?" You know, "Are, are you a city that can pay at the average? Are you gonna have trouble with that financially? Is that something, hey, maybe we can't be quite at the average, or maybe a little bit below, or maybe you want to be above?" We, we don't know the answers yet, but, um, again, we'll be able to sort of find those answers, bring those forward to council here, and, and share our findings and, and our recommendations for the future. That last step is where we get to that finalizing the project again. That's where we, we will come back and make another presentation. Uh, we will share with employees, both in written format, and potentially sometimes in either virtual meetings or recorded sessions, to explain the process that we went through. Uh, employees have a lot of questions. Again, sometimes that looks like a, a frequently asked questions document. Um, we do often, again, provide individual written recommendations to employees where it goes through the recommendations document we have, and it says, "Hey, this was your old title, and this is your new title." Or, "This was your old pay, and this is your new pay." Um, but again, you know, that always looks a little bit different because the recommendations is, is, you know, are always a little bit different for each study. So depending on what we recommend, depending on what we see, depending on what the concerns are, um, that communication would be tailored alongside your city staff to understand what is the best way to communicate with your employees, um, to make sure that everybody understands what happened, and understands why the recommendations were made. Um, you know, again, it's unlikely that we come in and we say, "Hey, everybody's below, everybody needs a raise." So some employee's gonna say, "Hey, if, if I was above market, what does that look like?" And we want to help explain that to them, of how we made that comparison, and how we found that you were actually paid appropriately, where other employees, that may not be the case. And again, want to explain that to them as well. Um, so really, that step six is about finalizing, sharing, and communicating there. Um, with the next slide, or sort of the last slide that I have here, just this brief overview. Overall, project timeline does take us about four and a half months to complete the entire engagement. We've already been working for a few weeks here. So again, we are targeting wrapping up the beginning portions of, of next year. We should have, again, some ideas and some draft, um, you know, formatting of, sort of what are those recommendations gonna look like towards the end of this year? And, and we are working towards that as a goal to, um, you know, again, go as quickly as we can, while certainly being as careful and as thorough as we can. And so, um, as with, um, you know, the rest of the project that is fully customizable to your organization, um, the timeline can be adjusted as needed. Um, you know, sometimes we find, "Hey, we, we really had excellent participation. We can go a little bit quicker than we thought." You know, the, the employee engagement is a big part of that. The employees all come out to our meetings, they share a lot of information, and helps us move a little bit quicker. Um, sometimes we'll have the results a little bit sooner. Sometimes if the employees are a little bit more hesitant to share, it can take a little bit longer to kind of coax that information out, can delay things just a little bit. But, um, again, our target is sort of end of this year, beginning of next year, having that, um, you know, those wrap-ups, the recommendations, et cetera. And we'll be working alongside, again, your HR and city staff and the committee that was just shared, um, you know, throughout the process to make sure they're fully updated of our progress. I believe that was the last slide that we had. Um, so are there any questions, or anything I can address today for council?
Any questions? No lights? Uh, yes, Counsel Holloway.
I think you did briefly, uh, touch on this. So after the study is completely done, you said your team will be available? Both questions in regards?
We absolutely will be. And depending on how you're asking, there's a couple of different ways that we make ourselves available. So at the conclusion of the study, we do help the city roll out the communication to staff. So that's a single dedicated effort where we have a written report, we'll make a final presentation. Sometimes we host meetings or town halls, or virtual presentation. Whatever that looks like will depend on kind of what the city wants to see there. So that's a sort of a dedicated effort there. And we do help with that communication push there. In addition to that, uh, we do have built into the contract a year of dedicated maintenance for your HR staff. So as we, again, don't know how big the changes will be yet, but if we see some changes, and your HR staff is working under a new system, they may have questions. You know, it may be, um, excuse me, maybe June of next year. And they say, "Well, we haven't seen this before. What do we do in this situation?" They will have access to us, again, for a year of dedicated maintenance. But I, I will emphasize with all of our, um, you know, client partnerships that we have, is we do look at that as a, a relationship and a partnership. There's not gonna be a time where we're ever gonna turn your HR department away and say, "No, we can't help you anymore." Uh, but we do build that in for your own peace of mind to understand that from the, the day we conclude, again, you've got a, a full year of support, so they can go through an entire cycle, you know, with us there of, of, you know, next year's recommendations, you know, looking at how do they adjust, or what recommendation do they make to, to come forward to the budget for adjustments to salaries? Um, so that's part of it as well.
Thanks so very much.
Absolutely.
I have a question, three questions. First, Dr. Mankin, when you could comprise the committee, would, did you consider appointing any mid-level employees? As it's all directors that y'all, that, that's comprised the committee, would you consider like a mid-level and a, either lower-level employee? Because I think sometimes when you are employee at the lower level, we forget as directors how they feel.
Right. So the, the original committee was to select the vendor.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, and, and so, now we'll start developing a committee of a variety of people to go through the process.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I was just, um, gonna say the same thing. Um, the employees are gonna be very, very involved. Um, we've had a lot of conversations. Um, I've had conversations with directors, making sure that they get their information together. Um, we really want employees at all levels to have a voice. So, um, we're definitely gonna include everyone.
Yeah, thank you, of course. Uh, we went out the door, but I, I'm glad this has come to fruition. And for the young man, um, will City Council be interviewed during this process too? We as a City Councilors?
So that is completely up to the organization here of, of what level of involvement we want from City Council. Uh, we typically do have, again, briefings, and, and certainly at the end, we would update on the status and the progress of that. Um, we can include that. I- if we would like to see if you all have feedback that you'd like to share, we're certainly able to accommodate that.
Well, she has some of our concerns going in. I mean, not just before you start even. I, I, if I was on Cal S, I would ask for a one-on-one to talk, to speak with you, so.
When we come on site, we can, yeah, set up those meetings if, if that will be so desired. We're certainly happy to meet with you and hear your, your concerns in a one-on-one setting, if, if that would be helpful to you.
Okay. And the other question is, how do you, when you do the salaries and everything, do you look at the city based on its population, or, and its tax base, when you make your overall recommendation? Because people like to compare Hopewell to Chesterfield all the time. Chesterfield has a billion-dollar budget. We have pennies. And it, it never can be the same. So when you do the salary, will it be in a range, or will it be just? I mean, it's all a recommendation, and the council has to prove what they desire. But, uh, how do you do, consider that?
So we look at your organization in the market, um, in, in essentially two different main ways. One of them is to look at your competitors. So who are the people that, when you're trying to hire somebody, they're also trying to hire somebody? Um, and again, Chesterfield could be an example there. Is even though they may have more resources, even though they're a larger organization, if you're both putting out an offer and you're saying, "Hey, we need a, a maintenance technician, or a mechanic, or, or an accountant, or whatever," if they're paying more, the employee or the prospective employee is not going to say, "Well, it's not fair. They're paying more, but they have a larger budget. I'm gonna go, you know, here instead." So it's important to look at that. With that being said, though, again, we also want to make sure we have a comparable sample of other organizations that, just like you said, might have similar budgets, similar concerns, you know, similar demographics, et cetera. We, we do look at things like that, like population, again. Um, and so, when, when we comprise that sample, uh, we don't want to compare you to just one or two organizations. We typically do look at, you know, at least, you know, a dozen or so organizations, so that we do understand there may be an organization on the high side, that maybe you're not gonna compete dollar-for-dollar with them, but it's still important to know what they're doing. On the other side, you may have some other organizations that you feel like, again, you, you have to be competitive, you have to be able to outpay them, or, or at least be in that same range. So that is part of the calculation, yes. Uh, I don't want it, I don't want you to think we're gonna come back and say, "Whatever Chesterfield pays, you'll pay that same amount." That's certainly not the, the process, but...
Yeah, we not.
Yeah, they would, they would likely be at least looked at as the top side of the market.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Uh, this part of the agenda deals with communication from citizens. I'll allow the City Clerk to read the notation. And did anyone sign up?
No.
No one signed up. After she reads it, if you would like to sign up, you have whatever, uh, what is it? Three minutes? Okay, all right.
A communications from citizens period is limited in total time to thirty minutes. It's part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing council shall approach the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any items scheduled for consideration on regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to council as a body. Any questions must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal and pertinent abusive or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council and removed, subject to appeal to a majority of council. See Rules 405 and 406.
Okay, no one signed up personally, would anyone in the audience like to come up and speak? Three minutes, come, come forth ma'am and state your name and which ward you live in. If you outside of Hopewell, just say I live in Chesterfield or wherever you live.
Good evening, my name is Denise Crandall, I live at thirty-five nineteen Jackson Farm Road, Hopewell, Virginia. I guess you consider that Ward five. I'm here to, Ward four, thank you ma'am. Um, I'm here to reside far as the noise ordinance, far as the pump station that's been down for three years. We can't even open our windows because of the noise. We, I mean, you hear it all day long, all night long. I do have a video of it, they have three generators running it and it's like, they'll come check it, then they'll leave. They'll come check it, then they'll leave, but it's like, it's like, it's stressful because we can't even have a movie night out, outside because the generator is constantly going. I'm trying to figure out why haven't they have repaired, it's been three years.
Okay, I can't answer that question for you, but we have a city manager listening that I'm sure she will. If you would give your name and phone number to the young lady to my right and she will contact you and let you know what they can do to satisfy.
I've called Tim somewhere off of the, the water re- renewal, I don't know how it works far as the system, but it's like, it's just getting ready, it's starting to be really stressful far as me, myself and my neighbors. I mean, it's, it's warm now, we can't even open our windows because of the noise. You can't even watch your TV because of the noise, you can't even talk on the phone because of your, because of the noise.
Well, I was already had to go for two or for three years, but hopefully they'll be, do some type of sound.
They said they was waiting on the part, I'm like, order from Amazon, it'll take three days.
Okay. Okay, she's going to give, give you information to her and, oh, you want to give to you? Yes ma'am, thank you for coming.
I'll, I'll be back again because I can't, it's just the noise. If you live there, you, you would understand, I have a video of the, of it, I was wanting to show, but I don't know if I can, but it's really.
Oh, look.
It's really, it's really disturbing and then we have, I have a bunch of senior citizen neighbors.
Can you get a voice?
Yes, please and thank you. And I've been in this town for like twenty years and this have never, I've never come down here and I'm just like really nervous about coming, but, you know, I'm ready to move.
Don't move.
And I'm a homeowner.
Alright ma'am.
This is what it sounds like. And it's loud in there, this is because I was stepping away from it.
This has been going for three years?
Three generators. Wow. And it's loud, it's really loud.
Well, it's a slow cave.
In Hopewell, right on Jackson Farm Road. Just where, they just fixed the road and all that stuff, but if you go down by Ash, you just hit the top of Hopewell on the backside of the high school. I live on the backside. But this is what, this is what we hear all day, all night.
For three years, it's been doing this?
For three years, yes, all day, all night, for three years. It's sad. They ask like if the contract is coming, oh, we're just contractors, we just come to check one, we're not here to repair it. So I'm trying to figure out why I have to keep listening to that.
Can I say?
My grandkids, we can't even have a movie night because we, we listen to that noise. And this is what you hear, I go home, this is what I'm going to hear, but the only thing is louder. We keep asking, we see them go down there, we wonder when it's going to get fixed, but it's not happening, it's going on three, this will be, it's going, this, and this winter will be the third year. Another winter, we gotta go through this.
I got a prediction, I don't think you'll have to go through it.
Oh, please and thank you, but this is, this is what we listen to. I'm on my fortune, I'm talking on the phone, I'm like, wait a minute, make the generator stop so I can talk.
That's okay. Alright, alright, Council Hallway.
It's a side, this is the side view, madam mayor, this is the.
Yes ma'am, thank you, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, and I, I didn't use, I wasn't going to come down here, but I'm tired.
Yes ma'am.
And it's very stressful.
I know it is.
Mental health.
And we all getting older.
Mental health stress.
Yes, yeah.
It's stressing me just listening to it from there.
Right, right, that's what I said, if, if, you know, if one of you guys, you know, man, you would get tired in it too. And I'm, I'm trying to keep my bill down so I can open up my windows. And if I, I can't get, I can't get my windows open because of this.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you so very much.
No, please and thank you. I'm probably going to be, they're probably going to give me that look now because I indeed something, I ain't trying to be nothing. Just get this fixed, not even have it to take.
Alright.
One of the whole.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Ma'am, 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 ma'am.
Oh ma'am, I'm sorry.
Need your information.
I just, see, see, I, no, just talking about it.
Does anyone else any, have any concerns? If not, we'll close this part of the agenda and open up our, for our public hearings. Oh, oh, Council Hallway?
She said this contractor, so is that like a third, none of our, uh, directors, nobody's ever received a complaint about?
The, the, the water department's not here.
Oh, it's the water renewal.
We'll, we'll meet to see if it's a, a vendor, outside contractor or actual water renewal.
She said it as a contractor, so the city probably don't know about it.
Just give us, just, once you find out, just call, let us know, Dr. Manca. Just let us know the in, in result. Public hearing, Mr. Ward.
Good evening, members of council, tonight in our first public hearing, we have a conditional use permit request. Uh, the request is to construct a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot, uh, which is parcel zero nine two zero six six five, also identified as three thousand Davison Avenue. The applicant is JRM Contractor LLC, who is, uh, here this evening and is available for questions when we get to the end. Property is located in Ward six and zoned R two residential medium. Um, we, uh, publish ads and letters to adjacent owners, uh, as required by state law. This particular property, uh, you can see on the left in the general location of, of where it is in the city and then on the right, is actually a double-through lot. And, uh, part of what you'll see when we get to the conditions, um, planning is requiring that those two lots be joined together. You can also see in the aerial that there is a, a house that's already shown there. That house was, has been demolished and is removed, is not currently there, it's the same with the shed, the shed is not there anymore either. In R two, uh, lot, minimum lot size, uh, would be seventy-five feet wide and seventy-five hundred square feet for a single-family dwelling. This particular lot is only fifty feet wide and five thousand square feet. So the non-conformity is both in the width and the total square footage. Again, that's a, a street view image of the house that was there previously. The applicant has submitted these, um, elevations, uh, for our consideration. The, uh, proposed house is a one-story, single-family dwelling, three-bedroom, two-bath, uh, about one thousand six hundred and five square feet. The front elevation here, rear elevation, right side and left side. Uh, with all CUP requests, staff, uh, goes through an analysis against the comprehensive plan as well as the required, uh, questions that we are supposed to ask as they are stated in the ordinance. Staff believes that this particular proposal is in alignment with both, um, the approval criteria as well as the comprehensive plan. The dwelling is a unique architectural style to the neighborhood. The average size of homes in the surrounding area is one thousand one ninety-three, whereas this house will be one thousand six oh five, so it's quite a bit larger. And it's significantly larger than the house it actually is replacing. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions, that the single-family dwelling will have, um, roof eaves of twelve inches minimum. The new home will have four-inch wide trim around all windows on the front of the house. The lot will have a minimum, uh, tree canopy coverage of twenty percent, a driveway of asphalt or concrete, a brick foundation on all four sides, foundation plannings along the front, and generally that the house will be in substantial conformance with the plans and elevations I just showed you. Planning commission, uh, agreed with staff, recommends approval, uh, with a five-zero vote at their public hearing that they held on August eighth. They did not add or change any of the, uh, recommended conditions. Uh, department also has not received any public comment on this application. Again, the applicant is here this evening and available for any questions if you have any, as, as am I.
Okay. So I can open up the public hearing now? Like to open up the public hearing for this, uh, cup, conditional use permit? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns? Okay, none, we'll close, close the public hearing. Any questions or concern from the council members? Council Hallway?
Just the second time, we can make a motion, right? I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, uh, CUP as, uh, suggested.
Is there a motion on the floor from Council Hallway and seconded by Counselor, uh, Joyner, to accept the conditional use permit? Do you want him to read the motion that?
I, I just would, it would help for clarity's sake if you, if you could identify the conditions that you agree with or, or if all of the conditions as presented are okay.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the, um, conditional use, uh, permit with the conditions as stated and listed.
Okay, uh, you accept that, you know?
Accept that, yes.
Uh, discussion? If none, I would just like to, might understand it's going to be a fifty-foot front building?
Uh, the lot itself is fifty feet wide?
No, no, what's the frontage, fifty feet, right?
The, the lot with is fifty feet, the house will not, he still has to meet all district setbacks, so. I think it's about twenty-some feet wide, the house? Twenty-three by fifty-six?
Okay.
Twenty-three by fifty-six will be the house.
Twenty-three feet?
Wide, yes ma'am. The lot is fifty.
Okay.
And then the house will be twenty-three, so he's still required to meet the district setbacks.
And what he doing, just as, as indicate with the house look like this?
Yes ma'am, uh, the last condition as stated is that he is, if, if you accept the conditions, he will be required,
And how many?
To build the house in substantial conformance to these plans.
And, and on each side, how, what, what is, and what room does that reflect for those windows are and the non-windows are? What is, what is this room where the non-windows are?
On, on this particular elevation?
Uh, I mean.
Kitchen, I think.
I don't know.
I, I did not include the floor plan, the applicant did, did submit a floor plan, uh, but I did not include it in the presentation.
Okay, look, look on the other, other side of the house.
So that's the front, this is the rear.
Right.
And then we've got the right side.
Does he know? Come up please. Do you remember what, what is, what room does this reflect with, there are no windows?
Uh, yes, so, uh, it's going to be a three, three-bedroom and two, two-bath, so that's going to be where the bath is going to be. Uh, that's the living room, sorry.
It's the living room?
Yes.
Okay.
So it would have two windows.
No, okay, what's on the other side where the living room is not then?
Oh, it's going to be the, the, uh, the three rooms, uh.
Bedroom?
Yes.
And they're not going to have windows?
Yes, they will have windows on the other side.
They don't have it up here? I mean, I, I, I wouldn't want to be in the bedroom, I don't know, maybe people would like that, but I, I don't know.
That's the kitchen.
Is this the kitchen?
That's the rear of the house.
But a kitchen definitely need a window, don't you think?
Would you like for me to show you the floor plan?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, I just want to know if it's windows, that's all.
Yeah, um, so, this required, bedrooms are required by building code to have windows, at least one. So if it's not shown on the side, a bedroom will be on the rear, so in this particular instance,
There's the rear.
The windows there on the right side of the rear elevation are actually the windows for the, the back bedroom. So they're not shown on the.
There's a left el, there's no left elevation shown here.
Uh, yeah, um, sorry. Yep, there it is.
There you go, okay, there you go.
And what's, what are those bedrooms do? Okay, just tell me if there are windows.
Every room's required to have.
Okay, 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 okay.
You're welcome to look.
No ma'am, I'm, I'm good. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, building code requires every room to have a window.
Okay.
Minimum, yeah, one.
Alright, as long as it's like that, well, like I see it, I'll vote yes, no modification. Okay, any other concerns, any other comments? Thank you, sir. With that, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Powell?
Yes.
Counselor Hallway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, Mr. Ward?
Thank you. For our second and final public hearing this evening, uh, relates to zoning ordinance amendment. And, uh, it's a proposal to increase development fees. You may remember, um, this from two previous work sessions. And, uh, real quickly, I'll just go through this presentation again. Uh, the development department has two sets of fees, there's one set for building permits and there's one for application, planning applications. You can see here that what our fees currently are and as they relate to jurisdictions around us. Uh, we, we are, uh, very, very low in, in cost and actually, um, wh- when I get to the right slide, I'll show that we actually, we don't even cover our, our costs for advertisement, which are required by state law. So primary applicants for these types of applications would be developers, uh, real estate investors, business owners and occasionally owner occupants or, or property owners. Uh, this is the slide that shows where we actually lose money because of the required advertisements. Uh, state law requires we place ads in newspaper, in the newspaper for, uh, required public hearings and the fees themselves, uh, should be able to cover those costs. Uh, our current fee structure does not allow that. So we are the lowest in the region, we're not covering our own costs, um, so essentially the, the, one way to look at it is the, overall, the citizens of Hopewell subsidize the applicants who submit these uh, because the advertisements have to be paid for, but they're not covered by the application fee. So staff, um, is proposing the following fee structure, uh, for the particular, uh, planning applications. Uh, for site plan, that was a little more tricky because, uh, requires typically multiple reviews by numerous departments. So that one has a fee structure, uh, where you have a base fee, submission fee of five hundred and fifty dollars for a site plan. Typically, staff will provide comments back to the applicant after a first review, so there's no charge for them to address those initial comments. But where we run into problems is, uh, applicants don't address those initial comments and they require an, another round of comment from staff and another submission. And it's called, um, in, in the industry, I guess, the planning world, it's called, uh, design by review. And it gets very expensive, takes a lot of time and in order to minimize that, jurisdictions have not, start using this, uh, this typical fee structure where it's, you've got a base submission fee and then additional fee for third and subsequent submissions. Not recommending any changes to building permit fees at all, uh, at this time, uh, both on the residential and commercial side. But on, on these planning application fees, staff is recommending rezoning at one thousand five hundred dollars for an application for variances, special exceptions and special use permits, five hundred dollars. Conditional use permits, six fifty and a zoning ordinance amendment, uh, thousand dollars. Again, we would be amending Article twenty-two, our fees are codified in, in our zoning ordinance, so, uh, any vote this evening would be amending Article twenty-two. Uh, I'm available for any questions, um, my one last request is that, uh, we make fees effective November first of this year.
Any questions? If none, I do have one, um, on the, on the fee for five fifty, then you don't charge and then you charge for the third?
Yes ma'am.
Why not charge for the second, then maybe you won't get a third because they don't want to pay any more money?
It's natural, uh, for someone to submit a site plan, I, I cannot think of a single instance when staff never had a comment on first submission. It's just normal. So we felt that that's not really fair to charge an applicant because it's ninety-nine point nine. I mean, I would actually go so far as to say a hundred percent of the time, there will be initial comments.
You know, for the people that have been doing this for years and years, aren't most of these people the same people that come back?
These are engineering firms that are submitting these? Yes ma'am.
Oh no.
So, um, that's just how it is, you know, they, they work in multiple jurisdictions, not everybody's, um, site plan requirements are the same and so oftentimes engineering, and I'm not blasting engineering firms, but oftentimes they will just develop a site plan as they are used to doing. That first review is where staff gets in alignment with what our local requirements are, then they'll come back and they'll fix it. The problem is, is when they're not fully addressed after that first review. They just keep submitting and submitting and never addressing what needs to be addressed. That's where it gets timely and costly. So we think that's the third and subsequent submittal would minimize that, the, the fee for that.
So every time they mi, submitted on the third, fourth, fifth, they pay two fifty?
Yes ma'am, that's what I'm proposing.
This food could throw it, right? Okay, any other comment? Okay, would, so, does someone make a motion?
No. No, we, just as the second, second one we hit on the same, and it gave the information, I agreed with this the last time, so I'd definitely make the motion. Second, we hit on the same, and it gave the information, I agreed with this the last time, so I definitely made the motion, I tried to make it last meeting.
Okay, did you read it from the? This is the public hearing part, okay, I'm sorry. Alright, thank you, no comments. Close the public, oh, open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments from the audience? No comments, we close the public hearing. And we take that motion, Counsel Holloway?
And this was right, you say right in the correct space, so we won't, we won't, uh, be in the negative any longer, right, we'll take care of all of the.
Yes, we will now be able to cover all of our advertisement costs.
Okay, so, uh, I'd like to, is there a language that you didn't written up?
Just to amend Article twenty-two.
Okay, so I'd like to make a, uh, uh, like to ma-, make a motion to accept the amendment Article twenty-two to increase the following fees for zoning, the various, uh, conditional use zoning, uh, site plan review, uh, with the costs that are listed, fifteen hundred, five hundred, six hundred and fifty, and a thousand dollars. Also five hundred and fifty based for first submittal, and third and subsequent resubmittals for two hundred and fifty dollars first submittal.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Counsel Holloway and Counsel Reader made the motion, uh, Joyner? Uh, wrote, any other discussion? And what discussion, Counsel, uh, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Powell?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, thank you, Mr. Ward. Now we're going to regular business, uh, uh, City Manager will carry us through that.
Madam Mayor, uh, the first order of business tonight on R one is the approval of update.
I'd like to amend the, uh, that, is it, is too late to amend? Cause I think you requested for the dates, and I didn't take that, or just, uh.
We just wanna add to the.
Madam Attorney, how do, can we go back to the, add the date to the amendment? Can they amend their, um, motion to go back and add the date, effective date for this last motion we passed?
Okay, so I'd like to make a.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, amend the last potion that was dated to add the date of November the first, Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Friday, November first.
November first, Friday, November the first, two thousand twenty-four.
And will you agree?
Second that.
Second motion?
Yes, second that.
There's currently a motion on the floor to amend our initial motion to include November first as the start date for this new, uh, fees. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, Madam Clerk?
Counsel Powell?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, we're back with you, Dr. Manager.
Alright, so tonight, to begin R one, we have, uh, Robert Williams, who is our emergency coordinator, man, uh, manager. He's here tonight to present us with the emergency operation plan and ask for counsel's approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Good, good evening, members of council, thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to come forward today to present our two thousand twenty-four emergency operations plan for your approval. You'll note that in the update that's required by the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and the state of Virginia, we have to do this every four years. So the changes are, are very basic, we've changed and updated names and titles of organizations, names and titles of individuals, and eliminated organizations that are no longer part of the city structure. We've updated the layout of our emergency operations center to be compliant with COVID requirements, and we've made the change to some appendices and annexes as required because they were updated by other agencies. Probably the most significant to us is the change from Hopewell alerts come, going away from Code Red. So again, uh, mainly updates, nothing structural change. So any questions?
Does anyone have any questions on what they reviewed? If not, oh, someone gives me a motion to approve the plan is written? Counsel Denton?
I reckon amend approval of the two thousand twenty-four emergency operations plan as presented.
Second it.
You have a comment?
Yeah, I don't see the, I don't see the actual, uh.
While he's looking, does anyone have any other comments? Okay. Yes ma'am.
I did, I, um, I attended a meeting a few weeks ago, um, it had to do with one of the, it was a public hearing for one of the permits, you know, water, air, that kind of thing, and, and there was a gentleman there from the Sierra Club that discussed, um, um, our emergency communications, and, you know, we've talked about this ourselves, um, but his, his thing was, um, so if there, if we have a, you know, a major meltdown at one of the industries, and we send out, you know, they receive a text and say shelter in place, his question was, do people really know what shelter in place is, that kind of thing, and I haven't, I, I haven't read through all of this, okay? Um, and so I, I mean, it was a valid question, um, and, you know, do we have, um, do we have any, um, I don't know, communications out to that, to the citizens that talk specifically about this, how often do we do that? And, I mean, is it something that you would deem worthwhile?
Absolutely worthwhile, uh, last year when we made the switch from Code Red over to Hopewell Alerts, we sent out a postcard to every citizen, every address in the city, on that, it outlines the basic, uh, shelter in place guidelines. About a month or forty-five days later, we sent out a trifold brochure that went into depth on shelter in place. We've got that brochure posted on our LEPC portion of our website. We're always willing to do public outreach, any opportunity to go out and talk about shelter in place, we're willing to do that, love doing that, talk about it often at our LEPC meetings. Any opportunity that someone wants to come out, wants us to come out, talk about shelter in place, we're glad to do it.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, for me, I'm, I'm in Ward one, so we're right there in the hard adjacent industry, and, uh, you know, I've mentioned this before, it, making sure that certain people that live in that adjacency really understand what they need to do in the case of something, maybe that's something we can talk about later. I know you guys meet every month and talk about it, but it came up in this, in this public hearing, and I was like, well, you know, I, I can't say that everybody knows how, what shelter in place means.
Yes ma'am.
And, I mean, you know, you certainly can't make, I mean, we're sending out a lot of information, whether or not they take it in is another story, but, um, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we are trying to get that message out, that, and so, I don't know if that's even covered in here, but I did wanna bring it up, I thought it was relevant.
It does discuss it in the plan, and I would also add that on October the twenty-fourth, the last farmers market for the season, we're working to develop a communications forum like we had last year, for the public to come out so we can talk a little bit more about shelter in place, about our Hopewell Alert, so that's another upcoming opportunity where we'll be glad to share information with the community about sheltering in place.
Well, is your literature in the library?
Yes ma'am, we placed the copies of these brochures at all the public facilities, there's, there's some downstairs, there's some at the library, there's some at the, uh.
Recreation park.
Recreation parks, the Chamber Commerce Building, so we placed those brochures out in all those also.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thanks.
Do we, do we have, do we have, like, like, school system has a, um, uh, call alert, uh, that comes out when something happened, do we have that same system? For emergencies that will call out to phone numbers with people that sign up?
Our, our Hopewell Alerts is available for that, and citizens can sign up for this, and likewise, we're at the precipice of bringing forward our I-Paws program. The I-Paws is the, it's, this is a subscription-based program, once we get I-Paws online, uh, that'll hit any phone that's in the jurisdiction. Any phone is in that footprint, so, I-Paws, we're on the verge, we've just gotta do a little bit more training, and we'll have it up, you know, well before the end of the year, we'll, we'll have that in place. And what that does is any phone that's within a certain geographical distance, they call it geofencing, any phone that's in there, and then we can resubmit that message as often as we need to based on the emergency that we're dealing with. If you're familiar with Amber Alerts, it's basically the Amber Alerts. The only difference is the state of Virginia actually does the Amber Alerts, is able to do the emergency alert related to something happening here in the region.
So you said, any of the contacts, your phone, you don't have to have a phone number, just have to be in the area and get that message?
Correct, you don't have to be subscribed, it'll, it'll get that message if you're in that geographical area that we designate based on that message.
And what's it called?
I-Paws, it's integrated, integrated.
We have it already?
We, we're in the process, we've been through the permitting process, we've been through the licensing process with the state and with FEMA, and there's just a little bit of training we've gotta go through, to, to be trained to, to send those messages.
Is that something that is, um, grant oriented, or how does that work?
I-Paws is funded through FEMA, and the, we pay for our public alert and warning system with Hopewell Alerts, and it gets, it's a feed-through to the I-Paw system. So part of it's paid for by, by federal, and, and I-Paws, I'm not sure if that's grant-funded, or just light item budgeted, but we pay specifically for the, uh, Hopewell Alerts, it will enable us to reach that message.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yes ma'am.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, that's right, Denton and Harris, are been most, this was a discussion. Um, now we have a roll call.
Counsel Powell?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Yeah, thank you for your.
Our work.
Thank you.
Record to that system coming on board. Okay, R two, Madam Ma-, Manager?
R two, we have tonight, uh, Mr. Charles Bennett, Director of Economic Development and Tourism, who will be presenting to the Virginia two fifty preservation fund, and he will be asking counsel for action tonight.
Thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to come back and present tonight, um, we're very excited about uh, three grant applications that I'm seeking approval to, um, apply for tonight by resolution. Earlier this, uh, summer, the Virginia Department of Historic Resources, they received a twenty million dollar, um, funding, uh, in order to fund for the Virginia biannual budget of the two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-six, improvements to significant historical sites, uh, history museums, uh, in the Commonwealth of Virginia in anticipation of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the American Revolution and seventeen seventy-six, or what is also known as the Virginia two fifty, or America two fifty celebrations. So, uh, they opened up pre-applications for these funds, uh, for us to submit pre-applications in August, we submitted four, uh, pre-applications, we were approved on those four pre-applications. Tonight, I am coming here seeking approval to move forward with three of those pre-applications, and each one has a resolution and a CAF that is in the presentation. Uh, the first one I'm here talking about is what we are referring to as the Davisville School Home Economics Cottage. As you will, uh, remember, uh, last year, we purchased through a support agreement to the Economic Development Authority, the, uh, former Harry E. James Technical School building, and that included on that site the, um, the Home Economics Cottage that was the original, uh, building that was built by the YMCA, that Reverend Samuel Perry began to teach eighty African-American students uh, in, in nineteen sixteen, when it was located over, uh, where the current, um, uh, Public Works Building is now, in, uh, the early nineteen forties, it was put on a trailer and relocated to the new school that was built when the plant school was, was torn down as the Home Economics Cottage. And so we are applying for, with your permission, a grant to do the renovations to that, and this, uh, grant, uh, will essentially fund the, um, both interior and exterior renovations, and then put in a, a ramp to make it accessible. Um, and all of this would be, uh, done prior to the two hundred and fiftieth, um, anniversary of two thousand twenty-six. And, uh, there is a match associated with this, one-third match, which would not be new funds, but these, this match funds would come from the, uh, purchase price that we submitted um, last year when we acquired the property, and, uh, so that is the, um, the resolution, and I'll pause and ask questions on this one before we go to the next two.
Any question? No, nope. I, is the cottage the, the one that is right on term of, uh, purchasers' drive road?
So it sits back.
Okay, it's the one in the back, okay, I got it.
The small building, it's approximately sixteen foot wide, thirty foot long.
Alright, thank you. What is that, City Man?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, um, I would like to suggest that we take action on all three of them separately, since there's three separate resolutions.
Uh, uh, yeah, we have to. Uh, I think, right, Madam Attorney? Okay, so.
You said, with the resolution?
Resolution right here.
Move to, uh, uh, how we need to, how, how we need to do to accept it as is, right?
Do we need to read it out?
Accept the resolution for conditional use permit to submit the Virginia two hundred and fifty preservation grant application to the Virginia Department of Historic Resources for Davisville Plant School House in Hopewell, Virginia.
There's second?
I'll second that.
Just, just, before, before we vote, um, I noticed a ti-, I noticed a typo in the title, uh, on this template, where it includes the word conditional use permit, and we're going to. We're going to strike that, uh, before it is executed by the, the mayor. So we just wanna clarify that, that the document will be revised to remove the terminology conditional use permit.
So frankly amendment, uh, what's the second, that, was that?
Uh, Harris.
Harris, uh, friendly amendment, uh, resolution for permit, no, resolution to submit a Virginia two hundred and fifty preservation grant application to Virginia Department of Historic Resources for the Davisville Plant School House in Hopewell, Virginia.
You agree, thank you. Any other questions, any discussion, under this motion? If not, roll call, Madam Court.
Counsel Powell?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Okay, next.
The next, uh, application that we would like to apply for the, uh, Virginia two fifty preservation grant is associated with the city of Hopewell Marina, and, um, let me, uh, explain a little bit about the, the, um, the reason why we are applying for this. If you look at the summary of the project and proposed use of funds on the CAF, you will see that I outlined the fact that, um, the rivers of the Appomattox and James River here in the city of Hopewell, they are the most historic rivers in us, the founding of our country, and we have historical assets including Weston Manor, um, Appomattox Manor, Old City Point, we have these historic sites that, uh, to see them and experience them from the water via historic tour will give you the most context of how the, uh, uh, America developed. They were also instrumental, these rivers, in actually, uh, the Revolutionary War, we know from the history that took place in this area. So this grant application is specifically associated with improvements to the center docks at the Marina to give people with disabilities full access to get on to those. to get on to those historic tour ships that will take people during the two fifty celebrations to see sites here from the water and experience the history in that way. And so this was highly encouraged by DHR for us to apply for because the, the grant is specifically addressing increasing access for people to historic sites. And so we could think of a no better, better way to do that than to make improvements to our, our docks, to have people with wheelchairs or any other type of disability be able to access the vessels, which is not possible right now without a lot of complications. So that is this grant. The grant is, actually, we would be applying for two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for this grant. And we would be using as the one-third match eighty-five thousand dollars as source funds for the improvements that were already in the budget for this year that we have been doing and then next year's budget as well, associated with replacement of the boardwalk and other dock repairs that have been taking place. So this would not be asking for any new funding sources. We would use what we have already budgeted and expensed as leverage towards this grant application.
Okay.
Move to, oh, just go ahead.
Take a motion, then we discuss it, yes.
All right, I move to accept the resolution for, condition, use permit. Resolution for, resolution to submit a Virginia two hundred and fifty preservation grant application to the Virginia Department of Historic Resources for the Hopewell City Marina ADA Access Project, Hopewell, Virginia.
Second that.
Second, by Counsel Joyner, discussion? No, no, I, I didn't catch it in the other one. Does, I mean, it's when it says you would submit the, the sign and submit the grant, is that normally you or is that the city manager?
So it's whoever counsel designates, so I have the login and password to the system where we upload it. So this resolution is giving me permission to make that application?
Okay, I was just wondering.
But when the grants come through, the manager approves the grants that come through.
Yeah, this is specific to apply, submit.
Okay, I understand, that's what I'm saying, where do you come in because you're overall responsible, so. Okay, that's my, that was my only question. Any other questions or concern? If not, Counsel Holloway made the motion and second by Counsel Jordan. No more discussion, roll call, Madam Court.
Counsel Pella?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
The last grant application I'm seeking permission to apply for this evening is associated with the redevelopment of the preservation, rather, of the Shiloh Lodge project. And we, in this case, are seeking approval to apply for a grant to construct ADA parking spaces and also to have wayfinding signage and sight lighting associated with accessibility to the Shiloh Lodge project, which, as you'll see in the resolution, I acknowledge the additional National Park Service grant that we have already obtained for the lodge itself. So this would be in addition to that. We would also, as part of this ADA access accessibility site, construct an exterior meditation garden for reflection and contemplation of our history and some of the things that took place at that site there in City Point. The City of Hopewell Department of Public Works, Recreation and Parks and other staff will be part of the installation of plaques and signage that we will be used towards the leverage of this in addition to the acquisition of property and the, the total amount we're asking for is. One second, I apologize. So in the, so in the resolution, we have, I just want to walk you through this. We're applying for four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And this is based on the eighty-five thousand dollars that we've already used to acquire the property and fifty thousand dollars from the Cameron Foundations and then additional hundred and twenty-four thousand that was approved last year by counsel towards the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar preservation grant as leverage. And then the one-third grant requirement of a hundred and sixty-six thousand. This source funds will be a combination of in-kind and adjacent property acquisition. And that's how we get to the four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So that's what we're asking for approval tonight towards the Shiloh Lodge project.
Oh, would, wait a minute, would this be a double, since we've already appropriated some of the money before you extract? We just doing the motion toward?
To the latter part?
Okay.
Correct, yes, so whereas the city council approves the one-third.
Match.
Match grant required for, for a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, the source funds will be a combination of the in-kind and adjacent property acquisition for the ADA parking.
I move, uh, resolution to submit a Virginia two hundred and fifty preservation grant application to the, to the Virginia Department of the Historical Resources. But the city of Hopewell approves a one-third match grant requirement for the one hundred and sixty-six thousand. Source of match funds will be a combination of in-kind and adjacent property acquisition for the ADA parking.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Denton, Counsel Holloway made the motion, Counsel Denton seconded. Uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, well, Madam Court, would you make the roll call?
Counsel Pella?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the work you do, Mr. Bennett is again, great job.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, Lord, one more, R three.
Madam Mayor and members of city council tonight, I'm before you to request the approval of opioid settlement funds to the city of Refuge. And I want to preface this conversation by saying, Ms. Pella, I did not brain view the documents that show the amount of dollars that the city received. It's actually on my desk, so I really apologize.
That's okay.
I can email it or, or to the city council tonight or first thing in the morning.
Okay.
But that total amount that we've received thus far is a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And in another era on my part was that I had indicated to you, we have been in it four years, it's actually two.
Okay.
Okay. And so tonight, I'm asking, is, is technically a hundred and forty-nine dollars is there? I'm asking the city for consideration for seventy thousand dollars. And the reason why I'm asking for seventy is because I would like counsel to discuss and, and possibly consider that surrounding areas, communities have banded together to try to create, to put their funds together to have a regional crisis support center. They are utilizing the funds from all localities in addition to trying to apply for a grant as well. If they are not successful, we still have the other seventy thousand dollars that we can, you know, give to the city of Refuge in the, in the future. So I'm just asking that we hold back some, some of those funds. The city of Refuge has received fifty thousand already at, at the beginning of this quarter. These funds here are coming directly from the federal government for the settlement of opioid funds. And so we can hold back the other seventy to see whether or not the participation and the, the possibility of opening a regional support center will come to fruition. And if not, we can consider releasing the rest of these funds to the city of Refuge in the future. So that's why it's seventy versus the entire hundred and forty-nine.
But, so I get a motion on the floor, then we can discuss. Wouldn't we like to make a motion for?
I move.
Oh, no, 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 excuse me. Madam Attorney, can we discuss based on her, her presentation before I make a motion? Or does we, do we have to have a motion on the floor? Okay, let's discuss first because I, I'm really not comfortable with the seventy thousand. I'd like to maybe influence my peers to change their mind about that. But I'd take conversation from my other councils first. Counsel, did you start?
Yeah, the seventy thousand dollars from my understanding, I thought, was just the same as it was yesterday.
Last year.
It's the same as it was last year.
Yes.
Where it came directly from federal. Now, a portion of it, all of it couldn't be assigned last time we were told.
No, so the, the, the conditions of the dollars indicate that we cannot surplant any dollars. We cannot take away what we give to them in order to replace it with what they are giving. So we had to continue to give our donation of fifty thousand. This is extra, this is over and beyond because they come from the settlement funds, yes.
Right, now, this, now, this doesn't, this is something that we can decide to put into any nonprofit organization, not just specifically the city of Refuge, correct?
Not specifically, but it has to be for the purposes of opioid, yes.
Right, so, so is, is opioid and what else is included in that grant? Is used like a list of ten things?
Nope.
Opioid settlement.
No, this is strictly, strictly in, 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 um, the national opioid settlement. Yes, ma'am, the city of Refuge has provided what they have done with those dollars. These dollars we have to present to the federal government so they can qualify as a.
I'm just trying to find the, where the list of, of, where the write-up is, where the dollars can be sent.
Okay, I have to email that to you. I, that's not in the packet, that was in the original packet last year about the settlement funds and how it can be used.
It has to be opioid related, you know?
Yeah, I, I understand that part.
Education, rehabilitation, the, the actual use of, of certain drugs to, to help them recover.
No, I get that portion. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is, I remember last year this being a topic and we couldn't give the whole, I think it was eighty thousand or something like that.
Well, that's all we had at that, at that time, but, but since then, the other dollars have come in.
They come in every quarter, works.
They come in every quarter.
So nothing goes to like administrate, uh, something?
No.
All right, so.
Not that I can recall.
Did I let Counsel Harris make that motion, I think he wanted to make it.
Well, we want to discuss first, I see somebody late on this side, Madam Counsel Joyner.
Yeah, I had a, a question, it may be totally unrelated, but talk about the, you're talking about a regional crisis center. Does that in any way blend in with the, you know, our efforts to create something here to address food insecurities and, you know, homelessness in general? I mean, I, I just didn't, I just didn't know if there was any crossover.
No, it's not, not from the other localities, it's not really a topic.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was, got it, all right, thank you.
I, I really think next time we ought to have a copy.
Anybody else want to say anything before Counsel Holloway extend his second thoughts now?
No, go ahead.
Okay, Counsel Holloway.
I think we should have had a copy of what it's used for next time before we take a vote for it because I'd like to see, there's usually a list of items, just like the R funds that, you know, that it can be used for. And if there's other organizations that help out in the city with, with these things for like youth and so forth and so on, and we can spread those funds to those organizations, like we got the famous project and all that stuff here. So if it's, if it's at all possible for those things to be able to go to those other organizations, I'd like to see that happen next time. But I, I yield the floor to Counsel Harris to make that motion.
Before I make the motion, I, I do it. In regards to this thing that we dealing with, with District nineteen, that there are the localities that feed into some, some type of a whole general fund that would allow us to be included in, here in Hopewell, in, in that particular element also. In regards to money that we have for opioid. It's my understanding from conversations that I was having with individuals from the crater planning area. So I, 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 I'd like the idea of what the city manager is saying in regards to holding back some of the money that we have, just in case we need to feed into something like that, which would be in our citizens' best interest.
Okay, well, my comments were that regional normally excludes Hopewell being the base. And since everyone talks about transportation as an issue, and then if Hopewell was the base, you bring in other, other people that have drug problems into the city. I'm not, I'm not so sure that we want to spend our monies when we know that there's a successful program right in our midst. I mean, the city of Refuge, I think, has shown its, its success in rehabbing and giving drug addicts actually a second chance to, for rehabilitation. And their, their recidivism has been great percentages. And I, I will be transparent and disclose, I am a member of that board and so is Counsel Harris. But I can make this decision unbiasedly and I will sign my little form, so I won't be cantaloupe productive. But I, I just think that maybe holding back some funds to see, once you can see what the other uses can be. But, I mean, I, I just don't believe in, our, our people, we have a successful, we have people in the program that comes from city of Refuge that come from Chesterfield, Prince George, Petersburg. And I can't remember so far as where as an employer, so we prove, that program has proven that of a success and we can't get monies from the areas that we serve, their citizens actually. So I, I just, I just don't see why we have to save money, put it in, and more money is coming in to call first when you have a successful program that's working, so. I can't make a motion, but I would like to see that maybe at least a hundred thousand dollars would go to city of Refuge and the remaining money stay instead until we can find out if there are any other eligible persons. But I have not heard of anybody, I mean, it's no one else that deal with opioid directly like they do. And they're, and, and we, I said they, we are trying to get a house for women. Right now, we do have a house for substance men because that is a homeless issue as well. And so we have a place where men can live now and we would like to move forward in, in purchasing a house or something, renovating a building if someone wants to donate or whatever, so that women will have a spot as well and families maybe potentially, a mother and her child or whatever. But so, women, we need a spot for them to have a place to stay. The people, the men that work, they work, they pay rent. So, I mean, it's, it's really getting people back on their feet and giving them a chance to rehab and, and live a life and budget and do all those things as well. Become wholesome citizens and wholesome human beings, so. That's just my thoughts, so whoever wants any other discussion before someone makes the motion.
I, I got a question. Is that, is there anything that prevents us from giving additional money to the city of Refuge? Is that, is there anything that prevents us from gi- from giving additional money to the City of Refuge?
No, that's what we're doing now.
No, no, that's what we're talking about.
So, um, okay.
Well, we need this a motion.
Okay, I'm ready.
So, I, did you ever look at, do I ask the question a while back? Because I was informed that the building that's behind, that's over by the camp pack, behind Brighter Living, I was told that that also was the same type of, um, facility here, where people actually coming into our city and go to that for, uh, the same thing. And I just had found out about it recently, that, that's an entire building.
Yeah, is that a for-profit organization though?
No, 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 it's a nonprofit organization. They, they kind of do the same thing, but I, I only knew about it because I know someone who works there, but I was quite surprised that nobody ever voted up for it.
There's an Alzheimer's hospital back there.
Yeah, it is beside it.
I don't anything about it.
But anyway, I, I, I'd like to entertain that motion.
Mr. Harris?
Well, I want to make the motion that we approve the, uh, settlement funds in the amount of seventy thousand dollars to be donated to the City of Refuge.
How much?
Seventy thousand.
Second.
I thought you said a hundred.
No, did we?
No, no, you make this motion, if you want to make a substitute, it's, uh, fine, but let him make his motion. Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
That one was recommended.
But I second this motion, so.
Seventy thousand?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, let it be seventy, what was recommended?
Second by Ms. Denton, you would like, uh, do we have to vote on the motion before we do the substitute? Or he can make a substitute motion now, right?
I'll make the substitute and make it a hundred thousand dollars.
Is there, I second that. Uh, we'll vote on this, this motion now, right? And then if this fails, we'll go back to the original, correct?
Yes, and, and, and let's vote on this motion, because you have four minutes to extend the meeting.
Okay, let's take a break, and can I get a motion to, uh, extend the meeting until we finish council comments after this, this action?
Can you put more than one motion on the floor?
Oh, that's right, let's hurry, okay, okay, uh, roll call. Four hundred thousand dollars to City of Refuge.
Council Pelham?
Yes.
Council Holloway?
Yes.
Council Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Council Denton?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, can I get a motion to extend the meeting to after council comments?
So moved.
So moved, second, I'll second that motion. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Council Pelham?
Yes.
Council Holloway?
I got a question on the one before.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, we gonna come back to it.
Alright.
Second, go ahead.
Council Holloway?
Just see people making comments, two or three minutes for each council.
Council Joyner?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Council Denton?
Yes.
Okay, so now, Ms. Denton.
Okay, we made, he made a motion for seventy thousand, I seconded. He made a...
Substitute motion.
Substitute, he was going, he wanted, did we make it? And we voted to let him have a substitute motion.
You vote, yeah, oh, we didn't do that.
Yeah, we did vote, you seconded and we voted.
I didn't second, I second your substitute.
Okay, just, okay, let, oh, hold on.
Okay.
Counselor, I mean, Madam Attorney, you know, I'm rusty, so tell me, should I have requested a motion to, for a substitute motion?
You did. And I, and I substituted and you seconded.
So that, was that appropriate? Okay, and we voted?
She can't, she can't do it.
She can second it, I moved, and she seconded.
I can second it.
You made the motion, and she seconded, make, and then you made a motion.
Correct.
And did we second that and vote on that?
So, so what happened?
Hold on, hold on. Tell me, Madam Attorney, excuse me, Ms. Denton, can't let it, let's give us the direct direction, because I'm rusty, so tell me which direction I need to go in. So now, do we need to vote on that particular substitute motion? Okay, so we straight?
Substitute motion.
Okay, okay, she said we straight.
And she says we're straight, and she knows more than us.
Right, but you didn't agree with it, so that's recorded as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I had a, I want to make a statement on this stuff.
Okay, go, go ahead.
I, we not at odds about how much money we giving to the City of Refuge, okay? If I had my way, I'd give it all to the City of Refuge. Now, what it is that I learned was that there are some programs that's out there that we could put money into that would include the people in Hopewell. I got that understanding, which is the reason why I asked the question, hey, can we give the money to them anytime we want to give it to them? And if the answer is yes, then, I mean, we can do that at any time. So I'm not against giving them the hundred thousand dollars, I own the board of that organization, and I know that they do a big service for this city. So, and, because they're having a fundraiser on Thursday in regards to that particular, uh, operation. So, I don't want it to seem like I'm at odds with raising the amount. I was just in favor of the recommendation, and that's what I made the motion. I got preempted by going up a hundred thousand, and I don't have a problem with that. So I just don't want the, our citizens to think that I'm at odds with anybody here about what we giving to the City of Refuge, okay?
Thank you. All right, Council Holloway?
Oh, Madam City Attorney, the, the clerks that may be aware, and I wanted to make sure that we were s- still in the right graces for something being legal, is to their understanding that there had to be a, a motion to request a substitute, to vote on that, and then come back and vote on a substitute motion, is that correct? That's what I think Council Denton was trying to clarify.
We've done that in the past, but...
Can we do that just to make sure we in?
You can do that to make sure.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, request for a substitute motion.
Second. You know what, I'm gonna do this, as the, uh, facilitator, I'm just gonna say, we okay. We got to advise of our attorney, say we did okay, we not going back. Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We giving a hundred thousand dollars to the City of Refuge.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Now, if we don't do something in the next couple of minutes, the meeting will be over.
No, we, we have now, that's the last agenda item, uh, and now we have comments starting with Council Holloway.
No, we don't, we've got reports from the city manager.
Oh, yeah, transitional plan, I'm sorry.
We already, but we already voted to extend the meeting.
We had another motion on the floor.
Madam Mayor, um, I won't take up counsel too much of their time, the, the packet is really long. I'm not going to read the information, uh, verbatim in the packet, but, uh, as noted in various meetings, the transi- uh, a transition plan was, uh, asked the city to create, uh, this tran- transition plan documents, how we, as the city, will move forward, uh, with transitioning away from, um, transitioning, uh, from what the, uh, Robert Bob group has, um, left behind. And so I just want to start with, um, providing some historical information. And so the Robert Bob group was hired last summer to provide, um, two tranches of, um, of services to the City of Hopewell. That first one was to establish a PMO office, to create SOPs with associated, uh, video files. We are currently in the process of going through those trainings as we speak. Those trainings have been very successful, there's been a lot of participation, uh, from various, uh, staff members. The second tranche that the Robert Bob group, um, was hired to provide was to complete a backlog of audits from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. As provided in my update on Friday, that they are extremely close to finishing twenty twenty and, um, providing that to City Council. After twenty twenty is completed, uh, we should be able to knock out the, the remainder of the audits, uh, fairly quickly. It's taken them a really extremely long time to, um, you know, get the cash balance, as we have been presented, um, on numerous times, and so that is where we stand with that. I'd like to take time to pre- uh, to thank the Robert Bob group and, um, Heather and the team, they came in with numerous people hands on it, and, and Mr. Bob likes to say that he's a difficult person to work with, but he's really not. Uh, he's actually been, um, fun to work with, um, on many occasions. Um, as we start, you have in your table contents, uh, the introduction, the financial data transition, then the transition by departments. As noted here, not all of the departments are listed. The departments that are only listed are the ones who are involved the most in the transition. That's not to say that all the departments have not had some piece, uh, in transitioning. However, the ones that are listed are the ones who, um, are driving the transition itself. And so, uh, this is referred to the transition plan, but in your weekly reports, it could be seen as what we refer to as the city leadership staff. But I want to make clear before we go into that what the, the city leadership staff consists of, and that consists of constitutional officers, that being the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer, and then the city manager staff, which is the IT, the Finance Department, and the Hopewell Water Renewal. So not all of those departments, the city manager is res- uh, uh, where, where the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer reports to, those two offices does not report to the city manager. However, they are, um, key stakeholders, um, and, and that we should be working closely together all the time to ensure, uh, the stability of the finance, finances here in the city. So in this transition plan, we'll not see all the departments, just the key players, uh, that are listed here. So, I want to point your attention to the financial data trans- uh, transition. That's actually on page... I'm sorry, can't get my stuff together here. Uh, nine, so these are the items that the city is requesting from, um, the Robert Bob group and, uh, U H Y, which is Jack Reagan. And so here we have li- uh, highlighted, in order for us to be successful going forward with, uh, and I think, uh, Jack and their group has completed a lot of this information. Obviously, it's been explained to us that we have to complete twenty before we can upload twenty-one, twenty-two. They have that information ready, ready to go. Uh, we just got to get to a stage where we can hand off. But we will be asking for journal entries, financial statement, cash balances, and cash recon, and then reconciliation and, uh, suspense accounts. Uh, the, these are all the information that they have, um, used to try to, uh, get us in a good spot. And so to hand that off to our CFO, so she can carry forward. Page eleven is the organizational chart. This is probably most useful for our citizens, so they can see and understand how our government is made up with the citizens and the voters, and who reports to the citizens and the voters, and then how the chart, um, expands downward. Um, this is a live document, I just want to say that. Um, as of yesterday, I received some, some new updates, um, that needed to go into the document, um, that Mr. Bob suggested, and so I'll be updating that as well. Um, but thi- this document will change, it's not something that is set in stone, um, forever and a day. On page twelve, um, you know, I need to update that, because as of Thursday, we hit a lot of, um, milestones, uh, where we were able to create, uh, where we were able to complete, um, pool cash, the bank reconciliation modules, the employee expense report module, the contract bids and management module, the development of the issue tracking system, and the SOP library. So we were able to finish those, we do have two outstanding issues, so I just want to point out, everything is not complete. The, uh, AFER module is not complete, um, and then the security settings. But we have to prioritize what was most important to get completed, and reconciliation is one of the most, um, important modules that we need to make sure that was up and running. And so we had to invest a lot of time and energy to ensuring that we can now reconcile electronically. Okay, we have, in the next, you'll see on page fourteen, we have training schedules, uh, as many of you have seen this before, uh, that walks us through what we've been trained on, uh, the training that's ahead, and, um, our completion of that, okay? And then the, the, a big, large portion of the document is the duties outlined for each department, what they're going to be responsible for going forward. I would like to report that we do have, um, a full staff in the Finance Department now, the city does have an accountant. Um, and, and so they are rocking and rolling, they're ready to go, hitting the ground running. And at the end, in the appendix, is very important to the city, I would think, uh, councilors would like to keep abreast, and we will make sure that in our finance committee meetings, as we complete the last two modules, uh, or as we continue on through this process, that we update the, the issue log, so council can always be abreast of what the issues are, what we have challenges with, and, uh, and keeping it updated along the way. And so these are examples of what the issue log will look like and what you can expect to see, uh, regularly, uh, as we, uh, navigate through, uh, all the new requirements. So again, I'm not going to spend time going from page to page, if council have any questions, those are the highlights of transition plan, and I'd just like to thank staff and everybody that's been involved with hanging in there, sticking to it, and getting it done. I'll go back to the mayor.
Just, any questions of Council Denton?
Yeah, I've got a couple. When you were talking, let me first say, you said, I thought I heard you say there are about two outstanding...
Issues.
Issues, what are those?
The AFER, so that's the billing of, uh, of, of the, um, statements that are used to give to our auditors at the end of the year.
At the end of the audits?
Audit and financial reports, AFER.
Yeah, CAFR, okay.
Right, but they are actual reports that we have to bill out into the system.
Right, right.
Those have not...
But we can't really do those until, as we finish that audit.
Right, so the city is not respons- we, we are responsible for twenty twenty-five. So when we go to produce...
Right.
In, in next year, this time, it should be ready for us to use.
So that's outstanding.
Yes.
What else is outstanding?
The, the security, um, settings for each department. So making sure that people have the right security settings in the segment of duties for each department. Um, they require some time to do, because once we change settings, we have to wait for someone to say, hey, it's not working, and then we have to figure out how to go, we can't just change settings across the entire organization all at one time.
Okay, so those two things are, as far as we know, right now, when we got the report from the Robert Bob group, the last one, that sixty-five page report, that was done some time ago, and everything has not been brought up to date.
Well, the, the reports are a week behind. Okay, so when you receive the report, you're receiving the report from the week prior, alright? And so today I just received a new report, and so it'll be posted, you know, tomorrow, first thing in the morning, you'll have it. But I normally get the reports on Monday, they're posted by Tuesday morning. But we have a lot of, uh, updates to make, uh, this week, and so I got it today instead of Monday. But we have a lot of, um, updates to make, uh, this week, and so I got it today instead of Monday.
Okay, I guess as I read that report, I guess, um, what bothered me to a certain degree was that they would say key le, key leadership, or they, they hit at different things, but they were not specific. And in looking at the organizational chart, at the one that you've got in your, uh, transition, when you look at that, and I don't have it right here, but I, when you look at it, it's got right at the top the constitutional officers, and then under that, it's got council, city manager, and then comes down to where, who we're responsible for, and that's you, and, um, city clerk, city attorney, and then the city departments. And, but it doesn't say anywhere in there, schools. And schools are part of this.
Well, schools are part of the transition. And schools have not implemented munis, and they're currently underway with, um, providing financial information. But the reason why you do not see that in the organizational chart, because schools does not report to, you know, to the council or in, in, anyway, it is not a city
Neither do, neither do the constitutional officers report.
Well, the, the constitutional officers re, report to the citizens. So this, this is, I hear what you're saying, the, the information, the information
We're not keeping all of us together.
The information that comes in to provide to the, the, the annual audit, yes, it comes from the schools, but they're not a part of our organizational chart.
Okay.
They are outside entity that provides their, their fiscal information to us because we provide dollars to them to, in their budget.
Okay.
But they have their own board.
Yeah, they'll make their own, follow their own rules.
Separate political
All right, but what, but I guess I'm asking is that this report, when they do this, um, we have, the Robert Bob group is doing this with the whole city. But it seems like the city is catching the brunt of all of it. If there are any, if it's criticism, it's the city's fault. We've got constitutional officers that have, from what I understand, are not cooperating like they should. We've got the cit, uh, the schools who are not doing everything they should. I just, I just want apples to be, I want to compare apples to apples and not apples, oranges and apples. If you know what I mean.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think those detail, um, fine or details can be discussed, um,
I would
in a, in a different forum. I mean, I, I, I introduced this by saying that not all of those entities report to the manager. However, we all have to work together to make this system work. Um, and, and hopefully, you know, the citizens, you know, with, with this chart being provided as well, can see who reports to where. Uh, and, and, you know, just to be clear, you know, this, it's referred to as city leadership in the reports, uh, but that's because we're functioning as a whole, as a unit.
But people aren't taking it that way. I, I'm, and that's why I feel like we need to make sure it is understood that way. Um, let me just ask you, as the city manager of our city, don't hit me. As the city manager of our city, have we done everything that we should have done during this past year? Have we cooperated? Have we trained? Have we, is, is Ms. Stacy back there going, is she ready to take over when the Robert Bob? And I will say, I'm very disappointed tonight that the Robert Bob group, what, somebody was not here from them tonight. We, they're supposed to be finished up the end of October.
Ditto.
And they're not here to address this report.
Ditto.
And I had questions I wanted to ask them, and they're not here, won't be here until the twenty-second. About time they go out the door. So I think that is not being fair to us as a council to get the, to get some of our questions answered. They put it in the reports, but they're not here to answer our questions. So it goes back to you, and you cannot answer for the constitutional officers. You cannot answer for the schools. But can you answer for those who work under your tutelage?
I, I would say those that work for me are ready to go. I'm not, uh, you, uh, you know, there has been challenges. I can't say that ha, there hasn't. You know, there's been, um, slow moving in some areas, um, you know, due to a ver, a variety of reasons, lack of understanding, lack of, um, you, you know, doing s, some of the homework that's required. Um, but we have to put things in perspective. Staff also has to do regular work too, at the same time that they have been pulled away to, to ensure that we get this work done as well. And so it's been a lot of pressure on everyone. Um, I, I think now that we're completely staffed, we have the right people in the right places. Council has, um, you know, provided us with the funding and the positions, um, um, to move the right people in the right places. We now have that, those positions are filled. Uh, Stacy is more, you know, our CFO is more than capable of, of leading the charge. She has been successful with, you know, hitting the ground running. I mean, we have three, four outstanding critical positions in her department. And, and, and they're all on boarded, sitting in the seat, ready to go. Um, and so I think the handoff has been, um, and, and, and listen, they are stepping back because they need us to perform, okay? So they're not going to be here to, to hold our hands even today, you know? They, they have to allow us to get it, get it done, okay? And so they will be here on the twenty-second to give their final report, um, and, and speak with council. And y, yes, there are still some outstanding things that, that need to get done that, you know, sooner than later. But as I stated before, the most critical items, um, that had to be implemented first are the ones that has been completed.
That have been completed, okay.
Anyone, anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
No, can I just say one comment first? Um, I, I, I thought, uh, we've always gotten a report where all the other outside agencies work cooperative and working together as a team. And I, I don't want to project that the constitutional officers haven't done their part in trying to be a part of the team.
Well, they, they have, I mean, they've been doing their part, okay? There's always areas where we can participate more, um, but there
Okay, I'll leave it at that, okay? A councillor comments, uh, councillor Holloway? You, you can't adjourn, we're going to adjourn after all the comments are made, yes.
Okay, well, uh, thank everybody who came out tonight and their participation. And, uh, thank you for all the directors and all the leadership that's in our city. Um, everybody's still not here and most people have held on as long as they can. Welcome to all of our newer, um, employees, our assistant city manager, our, uh, new CFO. Um, everybody's working so hard and doing such a great job. And thank you for your, uh, your time, your efforts, your knowledge and your, uh, willingness to serve our citizens. Again, thank you, um, to all the citizens who came out again as well.
Councillor Jordan? Oh, councillor Denton, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, just the
Oh, excuse me. One more comment. Thank you to our city manager as well, who is, uh, leading the charge in all this. I call the A.T., uh, you know, Robert, without you, you know, this wouldn't be functioning the way it is. So thank you so very much for your hard work. Uh, and I think everybody has their own comments, but I don't think you're incompetent. I think you're very capable and, um, thank you for your work that you've done.
Councillor Denton?
Um, just like to, to thank Charles Bennett for all of his hard work. And I just am always amazed at what he's succeeded down at that marina and is still doing, still get, going strong, so I do thank you. And, um, and our chief of police, Chief Taylor, and all their hard work that they're doing. And hope you're getting the volunteers and the help you need. And we do appreciate everything that you're doing for our city. And for the, those that are on board that are going to keep us on the high road, uh, after this is all done, I'm just tickled to death that you're there to help us. And we'll certainly try and do our part. Thank you.
Councillor Jordan?
Sure, thank you. Um, I wanted to echo some of the comments tonight about the Maiden Hopewell event. Um, I was able to attend the event on Friday. It was really an exceptional event. Um, and one of the things I think that we also integrated tonight was with the emergency management plan is that we have these industries in town that really are the responsible for the creation of the city of Hopewell. And they have to be good stewards, we have to be good stewards. Um, long-term, that's the only way that the city is going to be successful. I think it's very, um, it's, it's certainly a part of, of vibrant, um, economic development plan. I also wanted to take this opportunity to share with you very briefly, um, an incident that occurred to someone in my ward, and she asked me would I please let everybody know? And I'm taking this opportunity. This, this citizen was walking her dog about three weeks ago, came to the intersection of Hopewell and Appomattox Streets, and a pit bull came out and attacked, attacked the, this lady and that kind of thing. But she said, out of a terrible incident, she had a realization of the wonderful employees that work for the city, um, and, and citizens as well. Citizens saw this, they came out, they helped her. Um, somebody in Public Works, um, you know, one of the people that work in horticulture came over, saw it all, everything, called the police, the officer was wonderful. Um, just everybody that she encountered was really very, very gracious. And she wanted me to convey, you know, her appreciation to the frontline public contact employees that interacted with her. And, um, as we, as we close on the Robert Bob, um, project, it has been challenging, I'm sure, on, on many, you know, on many fronts, but we have made, certainly made progress. Uh, we're not going to make that pie in the sky, um, end of this year that everything is all done, but we're working toward that. And certainly the cash reconciliation was key and is critical to completing. Uh, we've really got, once we get the twenty twenty done, that's going to be huge. And I know we're working toward that, so thanks to everybody working on that. And thank, thanks to everyone that came out tonight.
Councillor Harris? Comments, if you have any comments?
I, I, I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you know, the com, I, I wanted to do that because of the Maiden Hopewell. I understand it was, I heard from several people, it was really good. It was a total success. And again, Mr. Bennett, we thank you for all the efforts. You're making it with your attitude to move Hopewell forward. And, uh, I think that is rubbing off on lots of people and the city employees especially. Uh, just to be positive, it doesn't hurt anything, my mother used to say to smile. I mean, I, I can attest to, I sat all day from, what was it, station nine to two, uh, in one of the SOP trainings that Mr. Bob group did for CPMT, for the community group that gives money for kids that need special services in the tune of three million dollars a year. The SOP training, it took five hours and, and, and is very intensive. Uh, I didn't want to be there. I, I made sure that I did an ear, early session of treatment just to be there. And so if it, the other SOP trainings were just as intense as that one, and having the people in the room on the phone at least to listen to that, and if that, you know, making the adjustments for the people that were there to make those suggestions. If people live and embed themselves into learning the right appropriate way, this city will, will shoot flowers in, in, in just amazing ways. So if everybody does their part, we can become that, that city beacon, beacon on the, of light for others to see that, once you fall and you still can get up and move forward. And I, I appreciate everybody's efforts in doing that. And Chief Taylor, without, uh, reservations, the work that your policemen do, and you're still trying to do with the aid of neighbors, National Night Out is when?
Eighteenth.
October nineteenth.
October the nineteenth?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. October the eighteenth is the National Night opportunity for us to get together as groups and, and, and display, uh, that we are serious about fighting crime. But I used to say it on everyone that I would, would, uh, go to, if you see something, say something. If you can't say something, do something. But until we get our, the citizens involved, you can't have a shooting in a playground with two hundred people and nobody see anything, it's just ridiculous. And until we can urge our parents to talk to the kids about being appropriate, that's not going to change a lot too. People blame the leadership of city, but a lot of things starts at home. And that's something that our local, as well as our national government, has to recognize. Things have to start at home. And I, and like, again, like, the Rob, Rob Bob group has done an outstanding job. And SOPs, I know that if, yeah, when people criticize them or anything else. I had, I took a part of that and was happy to do that. Again, that's all I have. And Mr. Councillor, you can, we don't have to make a motion, we just adjourn.
No, I, I, before we, uh, uh, I want to shout out the sheriff back there. He, he holds strong with us, uh, every meeting, great guy. So we appreciate you, man.
And thank you all for coming as well. Have a good night.
Motion to adjourn.
We all, you all have to adjourn.